Welcome to the regularly scheduled City Council meeting for August 26. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair recognizes Councilor Cruz in order to make a presentation. Councilor Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It gives me great pleasure, for the second time in a month at the City Council, to bring in a group of young Brocktonians who have done a great job representing us across the state and lead us farther into our title of City of Champions. We have with us tonight the under-16 girls team from the Brockton Youth Soccer Association and who have just recently won the Mass Tournament of Champions Under-16 Girls State Championship. And it's been a, I know how hard they've worked. It's, we had the boys' under-19 team in. We may have to do a separate meeting in the next few years because I think there'll be more and more of these teams. At this time, I'd like to invite up Coach Rob Texera so I can read the citation and he can introduce the girls. The City of Brockton, Massachusetts official citation. Be it known that the Brockton City Council hereby extends its congratulations to Coach Rob Texera's U-16 girls team in recognition of winning the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions 2013 U-16 Girls State Championship. And be it further known that the City Council extends best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Council and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Council. By Timothy J. Cruz, President of the City Council, Anthony Ziole, Clerk of the City Council. Thank you very much, Coach.
I just want to say thank you very much to all my coaches, my girls especially, and their parents. And this is very special for us and Brockton. Thank you very much.
If you could stand with the names already?
You can step off.
Okay, great.
These are my assistant coaches. John Coelho. My other assistant coach, Nick Fernandez. I have my team manager, Mary Lou. She's the best. My other team manager, Robin Texera. Now we'll get to my girls. My captains are Mariah Texera, my daughter. Another captain, Nicole Fernandez. And my third captain, Lexi Vales. Next is Amanda Almeida. Mrs. Erin Best. Tiana Bugs Bunny Brooks. Very tall, Kayla. Nadia, best smile, Tadota. Oh, here's my goalie. She's unbelievable. Bianca Costa. Okay, and the smallest and the shortest but the fastest, Yasmina Texera. Those are my girls. I think, thank you so much for having us here. I really appreciate it. We're going to take a quick recess so they can take some pictures.
Councilor Dunapoli.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to move Items 1 and 2 under the suspension of the rules tonight. Can you act on them tonight, please?
Was that collectively also?
Yeah, collectively, yes.
Motion made in second to take Items 1 and 2 under suspension of the rules collectively and act on them this evening. All those in favor? opposed? Motion approved. Mr. Clerk, would you read Items 1 and 2?
The appointment of Steven Montero to the rank of Fire Lieutenant in the Brockton Fire Department. The appointment of Joseph A. McDonough to the rank of Fire Lieutenant in the Brockton Fire Department.
Question comes in adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Rofe.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Dunapoli.
Yes.
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 The appointments are approved. Councilor Dunapoli.
A move for reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail.
Motion made in second and for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails. Good, now Lieutenant Montero, Lieutenant. Councillors will be in a brief recess. Councillors, we're back in session. Microphones are on. Item number three.
The appointment of Michael F. Dosh, 138 Berthew Avenue, Brockton, as a trustee of the War Memorial Building, City of Brockton, for three-year term ending August 2016.
Refer to finance.
Monica Vaschvaris, 573 North Montello Street, as a member of the Brockton Cultural Council, three-year term ending August 2016.
Refer to finance.
The appointment of Sandra J. Proctor, 140 Colonel Bell Drive, Brockton, for the Housing Authority, Board of Commissioners for a term of five years, ending 2018.
Refer to finance.
And of Paul Sullivan, East Ashland Street, Brockton, Licensed Commissioner, for a term of three years, ending August 2016.
Refer to finance.
The appointment of William Sharnick Wareham as a Constable of the City of Brockton, three-year term.
Refer to finance.
The appointment of Paul Sullivan, East Ashland Street, Brockton, Planning Board for a term of five years, ending 2018.
Refer to finance.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of August 19, 2013.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Assistant City Auditor certifying that the balance of the Stabilization Fund as of August 20, 2013, is $6,58,605.70.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor in accordance with Mass General laws, in order to finance the proposed cost of the contract settlement with Local 144 International Association of Firefighters, covering fiscal 11, 12, 13, recommending the following appropriation from the Stabilization Fund of $1,896,000 to Fire Department Personal Services, other than overtime, $1,740,000, and Fire Department Overtime, $156,000. Furthermore, in order to fund the proposed fiscal cost of a separate contract settlement with the same union for the period of fiscal 14, 15, and 16, also recommending an additional appropriation from the Stabilization Fund.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor in accordance with Mass General laws, recommending the City Council appropriate $100,000 from the Office of the Attorney General Grant for Distress Properties Identification and Revitalization to Office of the Mayor Fund for Distress Properties Identification and Revitalization.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CEOFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting appropriation any amount of $2,029,399 in order to expend funds under the provisions of Mass General laws, Chapter 90, fiscal 2014, awarded to the City of Brockton for the purpose of design and construction costs for approved projects.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of Police requesting authorization to expend grant monies related to fiscal 14, Public Safety, Answering Point, and Regional Emergency Communications Center support, an incentive grant in the amount of $315,586.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of Police requesting that the City Council accept and expend a donation in the amount of $4,850 for National Grid for School Communications Project. The money will be used for radio equipment upgrades at two of the middle schools.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Assistant City Auditor certifying the balance of the Park and Authority Meter Reserve for appropriation as of August 15, 2013, is $735,347.88.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Executive Director of the Park and Authority requesting a transfer of $8,250 from City Lots to fund the lease of property at 46 Montello Street, which will be used to accommodate park and patrons displaced by the Trinity Project.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Director of Emergency Management Agency requesting acceptance and expenditures of the grant from fiscal 2012, the MPG Grant, in the amount of $22,030. The end date for this contract is May 31, 2014. No goods, services may be procured after this date.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Captain of Operations Divisions of the Police Department requesting authorization to expend grant monies related to the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, fiscal 2014 Jail Division Grant, in the amount of $45,000.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an appropriation of $88,790.40 from Plymouth County District Attorney's Office, fiscal 12 Justice Assistant Grant to Brockton Police Fiscal Justice Assistance Grant. End council, July 22, 2013. Ready to refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Rofe.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Dunapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aiyaneiri.
Yes.
Millen.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Levin in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $44,000 from Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety, Year Six Local Action Research Grant to Brockton Police, Year Six Local Action Research Grant. End council, July 22, 2013. Ready to refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Rofe.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Dunapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aiyaneiri.
Yes.
Millen.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Levin in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $5,600 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Securities, Highway Safety Division, fiscal 2013 Traffic Enforcement Grant, the City of Brockton Police Department, fiscal 11 Traffic Enforcement Grant Fund. End council, July 22, 2013. Ready to refer the Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Rofe.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Dunapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aiyaneiri.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Levin in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
All that due notice be given to Antonio Pyres and Pyres Brothers Auto, Inc., that he is requested to appear before a committee of this council to discuss issues relative to violations of the conditions of the motor vehicle repair license granted for the premises located at 13 Watts Street. End council, June 24, ready to refer to the Committee on Finance. That report is unfavorable.
Counselor Stewart.
Point information. Can I just understand more information of why it's unfavorable, this particular result?
I believe at the meeting, the Councillors voted this unfavorable. It was recommended favorably in the hopes it would not pass. Because this, Counselor Stedinsky, if you could refresh me, this was in your, your ward correction?
Sadly, thank you, Mr. President. It was, it was, come out that way because the explanations and the fact of them not making an attempt to make the area safer so people can walk on the streets, vehicles can get through, and like, I personally didn't feel that it was a safe item. In the very near future, if it's not corrected in total, I'm going to have them in again.
And Counselor Stewart, this is a resolve, so this does not affect the license, but it sent the message to the license holder that the Councillor is not happy with his response to, and I believe, Mr. Clerk, a yes vote confirms the unfavorable recommendation, correct? correct?
Right.
So a yes vote confirms the unfavorable recommendation?
No, no it doesn't.
No?
No.
Okay, so, so you want to vote no?
I don't understand what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Okay, well that's why I was checking this, a no vote keeps this as an unfavorable recommendation on the resolve.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure of that, thank you. Question is on adoption by roll call vote, will a clerk please call a roll?
Roffey.
No.
Cruz.
No.
Annapolis.
No.
Dubois.
No.
Ioneary.
No.
MacMillan.
No.
Monahan.
No.
Hedy.
No.
Stewart.
No.
Stedinsky.
No.
Sullivan.
No.
Eleven in the affirmative.
The order fails. Mr. President. Counselor Monahan.
I'd like to make a motion, take number 42 out of order, and also that we act on it, act on it tonight, under suspension of the rules.
Motion is made in second, take item 42 out of order and under suspension of the rules to act on this this evening, all is in favor, opposed, councilors, just so you know, we do have Mr. Buckley, our Register of Deeds here, and he will take questions on this, I'm just reading it, and Mr. Jenkins from the B.R.A., you will be able to stay in your seats if you have any questions, Mr. Clerk, could you read the order?
Appropriation of $100,000 from Office of the Attorney General Grant for distressed properties identification and revitalization to Office of the Mayor Fund for distressed properties identification and revitalization.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley, could you step out, both of you, and explain to the council what this money is, and what we'll be doing with it?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, of the council, my name is John Buckley, I am the Register of Deeds for Plymouth County, the Register of Deeds all across Massachusetts have had a great working relationship with Attorney General Coakley, in terms of the foreclosure crisis that's affected Massachusetts, Brockton, as all of you know, has been very severely affected by the foreclosure crisis, there was a report out of the Mass Housing Partnership that identified the number of gateway communities that had very severe effect by foreclosures, Brockton being a significant number of those census tracts, the Attorney General approached the registers and talked about some extra money that were in, some settlement money available for dispersment and grants, all of the registers of deeds worked together in promoting the opportunity to create a grant for those communities that applied, to receive money to hire an individual, to promote the listing and sale of foreclosed properties, many of you know, in the neighborhoods that you represent, there are a lot of properties that have been sitting vacant for three, four, five years, this individual, that Robert will explain the hiring process, would be an advocate, trained by the Attorney General's Office, working with the registers of deeds, including myself, with our records, to advocate for the sale of those properties, so they wouldn't sit on, and deteriorate, they become public safety hazards, and deteriorate the neighborhoods, I can get into more information if you'd like, I mean, fortunately, the number of foreclosure deeds has been dropping over the years, in 2010 for Brockton, there were 422 properties that were taken back by lenders, in 2011, that number dropped to 281, 275 in 2012, and year-to-date, 93 properties have been taken over by lenders in 2013, the trend is a good direction, but there's still a lot of properties left behind, and that's what this grant is for, it's a two-year grant, completely funding all of the costs behind it, and would be run through the oversight of the B.R.A., and work closely with our office, so I could let Rodney say a few things and let, if you'd like to answer me any questions.
Counselors?
Let me let Robert speak.
Mr. Jenkins, if you want to talk a little bit about it for us?
My name is Robert Jenkins, I'm the Director of Housing at the Brockton Redevelopment Authority, the goal of this grant from the Attorney General's Office is to get these vacant, abandoned, or foreclosed properties into MLS, back on sale, as you may know, a lot of these properties are not just foreclosed, but they're vacant, abandoned, distressed, the goal of this is to hire, engage an individual that will work specifically with the Attorney General's Office, the Register of Deeds, to get these properties, and find out what their situation is, and get them back for sale in conditions that we can sell these properties, I will take any questions.
Counselor Annapolis.
Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, gentlemen, this is some great news for the City of Brockton, because all over the city, in Ward 5, 6, 7, and across the city, we have a lot of these homes, now, under this program now, who is going to take control of, you're going to take control of the property, that's correct, through the Registry of Deeds, and who's going to control the sale?
The control of the property will maintain with the owner, whether it's the bank, whether it's a private individual, they will maintain control, our objective, our goal here, is to get those vacant properties in a situation where they are for sale and back on the market, as you will see, a lot of the property that we've identified, and even the Register of Deeds have identified, through the city, are just laying vacant, there's no, you have no idea who owns it, we've gone through over 400 properties, just looking, trying to find out who actually owns it, through the receivership program, even through some of the homeowner rehab programs that the B.R.A. operates, we've identified houses that are vacant, and we still cannot maintain who the owner is, whether it's controlled privately, or whether it's controlled by the bank, but to answer your question, it will maintain with the owner, our job, or this individual's job, will be to find out and to get the owner, push the owner, whether it's bank or privately held, to get that property onto MLS, mass listing, to be sold.
Well, thank you, this is a great thing, and a great step in the right direction, to bring the city forward, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Stewart.
Mr. Jenkins, good program, question about the process of identifying this person, I've been on this qualifications, credentials mantra for some time, and was a bit dismayed to learn that for the junior planning position, I believe we only had three candidates apply for that position, if I'm not mistaken, and I was a bit uncertain how aggressive the marketing of that position was, I know that role was not placed on the Mass Municipal Association website, where a lot of individuals were interested in city jobs, and I, so what's the strategy for making certain that we?
I don't know about the planner, or the junior planner's position, but this is a work service agreement, a contract position, we will advertise in the enterprise, the pay scale will start at 45,000, it's only $100,000 for two years, the redevelopment authority through community development block grant will match certain funds, or certain activities, as far as travel, because there is going to be training by the AG's office.
I have a question, though, so, just, so in terms of the, I mean, because most, if you're looking at active and passive candidates out there, you know, folks are using LinkedIn, there are other social, Indeed, and other, Idealist, the Mass Municipal website, some other venues, so, if we're just posting positions on the city website in the enterprise, I just, I'm just not confident that's aggressive enough to get the best talent to apply for the jobs, who's managing the promotion of the position, is it your office?
The advertising will be the B.R.A., correct, and if you have ideas, I mean, LinkedIn is a very good source, you can go to Facebook, of course, but we're really looking for a certain type of individual that really needs to be aggressive, someone with legal background, title searches, real estate experience, we're looking for that type of person, because the person really does have to be aggressive, just can't take the first, as I say, the first kind of trigger, you'll contact, or you'll make contact with the owner, whether it's a bank, and you won't get a response, so you got to go beyond that, then you have to send out a letter probably through the AG's office, if not the Register of Deeds office, requesting information in the status and the future of said property, so this person, we're really looking for a person who is going to be, excuse my expression, a real dogged individual to go after the owner, whether it's a bank, whether it's privately held, it really doesn't matter, our goal here is to get these properties back on the market.
So I, I listed some examples that, where I think you may be able to find a larger pool of those kinds of individuals, and it's not just this particular posting, it just came to my attention that I, I'm not sure what the cities, and its collaborators, what our marketing strategy is for getting the best talent, because clearly, just promoting it in the local paper is not the best practice, so.
Well, let's just say that's not getting it, you're not getting the full bang from your book, by just doing it in the enterprise.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah, and a great program, and excited that you're part of the leadership team on this, and I know you have a lot of experience in this area, and have done some great things, so excited that that person will be in your office.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Dubois.
Thank you, hello, how are you doing?
I'm well, and yourself?
I'm good, I'm good, so, I know that there are quite a few properties in Ward 6 that are vacant, and owned by banks, and God knows who, and they're a mess, do you have a list of those homes?
I do, not on me, per se, but, I know the ones, if you're talking Ward 6 in particular, only because just last week, we did a site visit of seven properties in Ward 6.
Yes, yes, so could you email me the full list of properties?
Absolutely.
And how many are on that list?
Probably closest, on our current list, probably active list, about 78 properties throughout the city.
And what, how do you define our current list, what does that mean?
That we're actively pursuing some type of action, whether it's through receivership, whether it's through contact of the owner, whether it's actually going out and actually looking at the property to ensure that it is vacant and abandoned.
That's great, could I have that list, and do you have a bigger list?
There is a list of when we first started the program, when I started in '09, through code enforcement, and that list probably consists of some 300, 400 properties.
Are you on the group that, that, are you, is your organization at all involved with registration of vacant properties?
Correct, yes, we are.
So that's been going on for what, like a year now?
Oh, the City Council passed that two years ago, so it's been.
But how long have you had someone on your staff doing that?
About a year and a half.
Okay, and so that has some kind of database, right?
Oh yeah, that has a huge list.
Could I have an Excel spreadsheet of that?
Absolutely.
I would love an electronic, but I'll take it, hard copy, if that's easier, and I think my fellow councilors would like that, too.
That'd be actually great, and actually, one of the responsibilities for this individual will be to report, not just to the Attorney General's Office, Register of Deeds, and the B.R.A., but also to the Mayor's Office in this council, they will be requesting and giving at least quarterly updates to this council.
And what's the salary?
Salary will start out at 45.
Okay, is this a full-time position at 45?
Well, this is not a full-time, as, per se, hours, this is a task-oriented service agreement.
Okay, good, great, so that, because it's going to be difficult to find the professional that you're describing, that will work full-time for $45,000 a year, though.
But this is a task service agreement that we will have with this individual, certain tasks they will have to do and complete, we have a list, I mean, Register Buckley has a list of 47 properties approximately, John?
Just so, so you know, Counselor, if you go on our website, and you look up a property address of the previous owner, you can find out whether that property's been taken back by the lender, foreclosure deed, you can track it yourself, for everyone's interest, we have a training room down in Plymouth that meets the first Thursday of every month, you can learn how to use your system, and although I'm sure the list will be more helpful, you could certainly go online and check it out yourself.
You know, I think that's a great thing, and maybe some Thursday that I have off, I'll try to make it down for that training, because I have gone onto your site before, and I've gotten to a point, but I think that I would just need to know more of the ins and outs, to get more value out of it.
Yeah, but in answer to a previous comment on who owns it, once the property has been foreclosed upon by a lender, it's the lender's responsibility, they own that property, and that's who the target of this project is.
All right, so when do you think you'll be having interviews, and when do you think this person will be on board, what do you, what is your timeframe, what are you hoping for, you guys?
Timeframe, it's really up to this council, once you pass and accept its order, we will then seek and put together a work service agreement for this individual, and then advertise, whether it's through the enterprise, LinkedIn, electronically, word of mouth, and get folks in, we'd like to have this person actually hired, would have been nice to September 1st, but we probably looking at at least 30 days.
Could you send that to me, I know many housing legal services attorneys that are looking for work, so thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McMillan.
Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Jenkins, good evening, Mr. Buckley, how are you, you said you identified 78 properties, how many could you not identify, and who the owner is?
Um, wow.
Is that a lot?
Our initial list, from the start of this program, Councilman, probably through the last four years, we've gone through probably close to 250 properties.
You cannot identify who owns it?
We've identified, or some action was taken, I can't say that we didn't identify, because sometimes we send out a letter to the, from the AG's office, Attorney General's office, that will spur the owner to do something, to sell, to rehab, to do something.
Right.
Then those properties, what we consider are successes.
So are there any properties that you have no clue who owns it?
Sure, the, I would probably say the, a number of properties that are on Register Buckley's list, we don't know at this point in time.
Are the taxes being paid on those properties, though, or no?
Probably not, if it's a bank, usually the banks will pay, so if it's foreclosed, yes, the taxes are probably being paid, but if it hasn't been foreclosed, and it's just vacant, no, probably.
So is that, is that list of taxes not being paid, and you can't identify the owner, is that being sent to the city, so we can probably maybe take it over?
Um, I would say there is a list, going back to Counselor Dubois, there is a list of registered property, that I'd probably say only maybe 60% have registered, the other 40% have not registered, could be because we don't know, or we send the letters out through the building department, they don't necessarily get to the proper owner, it could just be, once again, it could just be an absentee landlord, could just be owner, just could be, you know, the property is just vacant, abandoned, once again, but that's a big list, that's over 400 properties.
I'm just, I'm just keying in right now, on the properties that are abandoned, not being, taxes not being paid for, and if they're not being paid for, then the city should be taking those over, and then hopefully, we can flip them and make the money on them, but, you know, I just wondering if these 78 properties, they are identified owners?
For the most part, we have, I would say, yes, identified the owners, we've sent letters out through the AG's office, whether or not we've gotten a response back, is a totally different question.
Mr. Buckley, I'm sorry, what is the process, and how long do they have to go without paying tax before we, as a city, will take it over, will take it over?
Tax title's a different issue than foreclosure, so you really have to get your city treasurer in to talk about the process that they use, but there are a lot of foreclosed properties that people don't pay their taxes, because they're just trying to make a mortgage payment to stay in the house, as you know, but.
But I'm not talking about these unidentified property owners, who haven't been paid, paying the taxes, and that's, that's an abandoned property.
In my opinion, I don't think there is an unidentified owner, because in our record system, it's, the title is in somebody's name.
Right.
But, and again, we have sent out, we opened this new training room, we've sent it around to all the municipalities, and so people can have ease of access to our records, and certainly any of the councils, and any of the department heads that would, you know, like to get more involved in that kind of research, we can help out.
All right.
But one other thing I want to mention, the Attorney General's Office, and this is why we really need to move forward quickly on the hiring, is going to be training all of these individuals, and Brockton got one of the largest grants, but there are going to be about 14 to 15 communities that are going to be hiring individuals, they're going to train them, they're going to give them access to the regional REO, people for the major banks, and the Attorney General's Office has committed, if they do not respond to this individual, that list by that individual will then go forward to receivership, if not receivership, there'll be another lawsuit filed by the Attorney General against that bank, so there's a lot of, of a stick behind the.
Are we, are we, right now, late in doing this, in the other communities, because we're in the summer session, and you, you know, we had to wait till the end of this month, okay, I just, I'm just curious.
I motion to move in as soon as I can.
On the suspension, I understand that, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, good evening, gentlemen, I want to thank you for being here tonight, and this, this is a great thing for the City of Brockton, and now, Mr. Jenkins, in terms of the AG's office and the receivership program, it's always been my understanding that there's been a certain Assistant AG assigned, it used to be Attorney Dan Les, who lives over in Easton, and I know there's been a reorg with the AG's office, in terms of territory, the person that's going to be hired, are they going to be working with that specific Assistant AG?
Correct.
Okay.
They'll, more than likely, they'll be working with Attorney Dan Les from the Attorney General's Office.
It is Dan, okay, okay.
It is Dan Les, but more closely, they'll be working with our Register Buckley, in getting that information, and also, as I said, Attorney General's Office directly.
Okay, okay, and I'd be remiss to. And I'd be remiss to, to not remind everybody, we're very fortunate to have Attorney John Buckley as a registered deeds. He serves Plymouth County, but he lives here in the city of Champions in Brockton, so we're lucky to have John. And if you ever had the opportunity to go to, under his watch, the old district court, 155 West Elm Street, it's really an amenity to the city of Brockton, it's the satellite office. But if you do want to journey down, and I did it, to Plymouth to see the registry of deeds, it's almost like a museum down there, and John will give you a tour, and it's really wonderful. So, John, kudos to what you're doing, you're a great example of a public servant, so thank you, and thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Petty.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Jenkins. What happens on day seven-hundred-and-thirty-one? In the two years that's over, this person's job is through, or will there be money for another reappropriate, requested for another reappropriation, or is everything just go away that was worked on the previous two years?
Hopefully, it just doesn't go away, but the key here is, is really, in two years, we really hope to, I think our grant set to have at least fifty properties, just based on this program, back on M L S municipal, the listing, the multi-listing services, for sale, fifty properties throughout Brockton is actually a, a good number for two years, and I think we kind of underestimate it, but I think we have enough inventory of vacant, abandoned property that fifty's a good number for this individual to shoot for or for us to shoot for, because, as I said, there's the registers listing, there's the A G's listing, and then there's the city's listing. This person has a lot of, property isn't the issue. The issue is, is how quickly can they move and get this stuff back into folks who are looking to buy? As you know, and I think John can attest to, there's a shortage, there's supposedly a shortage of available housing. Well, there's not a shortage of vacant, abandoned housing in this city. We have a lot of it, and we need to move it.
And so, this person, so this person will have the tools that will enable them to speed through processes that, right now, many people have experienced that, they're just in a quagmire, they can't go from here. Even the conventional banking methods.
Correct.
Are slow.
Absolutely.
So, this person will be able to just go right through that?
That's what we're hoping. That is, I mean, even the B R A, we get into a quagmire. That's why we've moved through so many properties, is because you hit a wall and then you kind of, you don't want to spin your wheels just chasing one property, so we just move to the next one, and we kind of focus on vacant property.
Is there any idea of the homes, the seventy-eight, I think, that you mentioned? Is there a dollar value on that? You want like fifty thousand average per home? Will this bring in three and a half million in sales, four million, one million? You have any idea?
If we can do fifty, just my opinion and just guessing, you're going to be over fifteen million easily, just in moving some of these properties, especially those that are in the better wards. I hate to say it, but there are some wards, Ward 6, when we did the tour.
Everybody loves to live in Ward 6. It is a great ward. I love.
We saw seven properties, five of which were on Huffington.
We have a very low crime rate.
To move those properties, to get them into the receivership program, would be one, good for the neighborhood, good for the neighbors, good for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Monahan, in standing motion.
Make favorable recommendation?
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend, excuse me, to approve.
Approve, sorry.
Mr. Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
De Napoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the firm.
The order is adopted. Counselor Brophy.
Move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Motion made in second for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel.
Order that the city council accept and expend a donation in the amount of four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars for National Grid for a school communication project. The money will be used for radio equipment upgrade at two of the middle schools.
Refer to finance.
Order that D P W was authorized to issue a sewer connection with a property located at plot thirty-three North Carey Street, Book forty-three, four thirty-nine, page three thirty-nine.
Uh, refer to finance.
Transfer of eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, parking meter reserve fees, parking authority purchase of services.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of two-million-twenty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars from available funds, Brockton Chapter Ninety apportionment for fiscal two thousand and fourteen, to highway transportation project funds, fiscal fourteen, Chapter Ninety projects.
Counselor Reenery.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the council, as you know, this is the Chapter Ninety monies that we've been waiting for, for the last, I think, several months, and as you know, each and every year, we wait for this money to come into the city so that we can do roadwork and street repair, which I'm sure all of you know as ward counselors and as counselors, that a lot of those things happen right within our own, our ward. So, this evening, counselors, I'd like to take this item and suspend the rules and act on it this evening so that we can go to work and get these streets going. If not, we're going to go off to the finance meeting, which will be September sixteenth, it'll be the end of September, before it gets approved, and it will be into October.
Second.
And that makes a, makes it difficult.
Motion made in second to take item number forty-three this evening and act on the suspension of the rules. All those in favor? Opposed? So, moved. Question is on adoption. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Brophy.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
De Napoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the firm.
The order is adopted. Counselor Reenery.
I move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Motion made in second for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Appropriation of three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars from the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security nine-one-one Department Grant to City of Brockton Police Department Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Incentive Grant Fund. These funds will be used to backfill both E T D and police dispatches wages incurred from eight-twelve thirteen to six-thirty fourteen for any associated overtime costs to replace the same personnel, as well as funds to install a recently purchased E T D computer consoles.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of twenty-two-thousand-thirty dollars from the Mass Emergency Management Agency Performance Grant Program to Brockton Emergency Management Agency. Brockton Emergency Management Agency intends to use these grant funds for installation of satellite receivers, radios, multiplexes, antennas, and associated cables.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation of forty-five-thousand dollars from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Mass Department of Mental Health, Police Base Jail Division Grant for Fiscal Four two thousand and fourteen, City of Brockton Police Department Jail Division Grant Fund.
Refer to finance.
Appropriation totaling three-million-five-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars from the Stabilization Fund to Fire Department Personal Services, other than overtime, Fire Department overtime, in order to fund the proposed fiscal fourteen costs of a separate contract settlement with the same union for the period of fiscal fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Also recommending additional appropriation from the Stabilization Fund of one-million-seven-hundred-thousand dollars to Fire Department Personal Services, other than overtime, one-million-five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, Fire Department overtime, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. The parties have agreed that both contracts must receive funding approval for the provisions of either contract to be effective.
Refer to finance.
Resolve that the representative of National Grid be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss emergency preparedness.
Refer to finance.
Resolve that the mayor, the library director, the chairman of the Board of Library Trustees, the superintendent of buildings, chairman of the Library Foundation be invited to appear before a committee of this council to provide information on planned improvements to the West Branch Library.
Refer to finance.
Resolve that due notice be given to Luisa Rodriguez, as owner and premises located at six-forty-nine Warren Avenue, and as holder of a motor vehicle repair license operated under the name of A and B Auto Repair, that she is requested to appear before a committee of this council to discuss issues relative to the conditions of the premises at six-forty-nine Warren Avenue, possible zoning violations at six-forty-nine Warren Avenue, and violations of the condition of the motor vehicle repair license granted for the premises located at six-forty-nine Warren Avenue.
Refer to finance.
Resolve that the mayor, building commissioner, and a representative from National Grid come before the finance committee to discuss and outline the installation process and to explain the reasons for the significant timing delay pertaining to the air quality monitoring system to be located at the Buckley Park Ground outside Kilman School located within the city.
Refer to finance. Counselor De Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a motion to accept a late file.
Second. Motion made in second to accept a late file. All those in favor? Opposed? Late file is accepted. Is it in the hands of the clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Robin?
An appropriation of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from the Mass Sayet Community College Grant for design service for intersection improvement to D P W Project Fund for improvements at Crescent Street, Quincy Street, and Mass Sayet Boulevard.
Refer to finance.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the city council authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Mass Sayet Community College for improvements of the intersection, Crescent Street, and the college entrance, and appropriate one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from the Mass Sayet Community College Grant for design services for intersection improvement to D P W Project Fund for improvements at Crescent Street, Quincy Street, Mass Sayet Boulevard.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file. Any other business, Counselors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Stewart.
Point of personal privilege.
You may.
Just wanted to point out that this Sunday was an incredible ceremony at one of our local churches, and the mayor and I had the privilege of speaking, and I know my colleague, Counselor Dubois, was in attendance, and it was an interfaith celebration in words and music for the fiftieth anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s I Have a Dream speech. And I was, first of all.
And the march on Washington.
Which is, you know, at the National Mall, fifth anniversary.